The night before our council meeting to learn more about something that will be on our agenda tomorrow, and we're going to try and get everybody out of here quickly. So, Chris, I wondered if you could start off by just telling council about the good mention that Erie got today from the White House, if you could just, and I'll forward the email that Chris sent to me.
Sure, thank you. So, yeah, related to what we're going to be talking about tonight, we were actually mentioned in the president's comments today on some creative ways of using ARP funding for housing development, and so that's always good to see. You mentioned Denver and Erie, so apparently Denver's doing something similar, but so we like to see, you know, support from the White House and Treasury, and I don't have the exact quote, I sent it to Liz, but just they were happy to see, you know, the funds go to a way that we can reuse them over and over again, and then support, you know, projects like this as well, so.
Okay, now we'll go to, I think, to Matt Good to talk about what the project is, what you're requesting, why this is important, and...
One more quick thing, Liz, just, so, this, you'll see this on the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting as well, and there was a memo attached, but that's why we also thought it was important to, you know, go into a little more detail before your meeting tomorrow night, but you'll see that this is on the agenda for the housing development revolving loan fund, so all ties together.
Good evening, everyone. As Liz said, my name is Matthew Good, I'm the chief executive officer of Housing and Neighborhood Development Service, more commonly known in the community as HANDS. HANDS is celebrating its 55th anniversary this year in service to the community, and we have just over 1,100 units of housing in five counties in northwest Pennsylvania, but primarily we've been a developer of affordable housing here in the Erie community. We have been working on a development by the name of Hammer Mill Village. This invokes the name of the prior use of the site we have been considering at 1318 East Lake Road. In the packets that I provided to you, it's the red, basically the red outline on the cover sheet that does front East Lake Road, and then in a rather flag shape fans out toward the lake. The property is currently owned by an entity of the Erie County Redevelopment Authority. They've been marketing various properties that they own, and quite honestly, I had forgotten that there was a parcel remaining of this site. Erie Management Group has the balance of the site, and I was shopping in the neighborhood at Trokka's Market for pierogies and other items in that neighborhood, and I noticed the new marketing that they had out there, and simply made a call to take a look at it and to see if it could be a suitable development site for affordable housing. So, we currently have a letter of intent, and we are negotiating a final purchase agreement with the Erie County Redevelopment Authority. We're applying for a number of funding sources to make this project possible. I can get this back out, I see in general, though, about, you know, questions about affordable housing and need. One of the things that we are contending with in the market right now is the rising cost of construction and the ability to fulfill our mission of building and providing affordable housing for residents in our community. And one of the unique tools that we have been applying for and involved in is the revolving loan fund that Chris has been developing with the ARP funds. And so, several weeks ago, we applied or presented before the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, and they have made a recommendation to council for $3 million of revolving loan fund toward an overall project that will probably be close to $20 million by the end of the day. Also in the packet, we have, would probably be developed in phases. Right now, we're proposing a development in a single-story, no, I'm sorry, a single building, multiple-story building that faces East Lake Road. You can kind of see the L shape of that proposed design, but the site, obviously, being multiple acres, 24 acres, would be able to have multiple stages of development over the years. There's a conceptual site plan of a fully developed site, which is the very, very last page of the packet that we put together there for everyone. So, upon their recommendation, we've always been very successful with securing leverage from outside of the Erie community with the local support that has been pledged by the city of Erie, primarily through the Home Investment Partnership Program. I believe in a roundabout way, council has already approved or supported this project in a way through the home funding that has been allocated, about $300,000 requests that we made through the home program. We feel that this project in particular tells a very, very good story of reuse of a former industrial site. There is some remediation, but we feel that it's attainable to provide quality, safe, affordable housing on this location. It's in a unique corridor of some newer business ventures, as well as some established business ventures. One of our project supporters and one of our partners is UPMC Hammett and the Health Foundation through the Erie Center on Arts for ECAT, Erie Center for Arts and Technology, excuse me, and some of their job training programs that are going along there. And so, we feel that there are just many, many unique facets and partnerships to this project that check off a lot of boxes, as far as reuse of a brownfield site, getting that back into active use, partnering with community organizations to provide this housing opportunity. Also, there's a unique feature as far as health care in tying it to affordable housing, and that is the health clinic that is located at the ECAT building at the Wayne School. It's a federally qualified health program, and so it is intended to provide access points to low-income individuals in the community. And so, just the location of it, the overall need, I can speak a little bit to that. We had, we opened a project last fall, completed it last fall by the name of Midtown Revitalization within the city of Erie. It's located between 12th and 14th French and Parade Street area of the city, and we are fully leased up at that property, as well as having a significant waiting list. This property would also have designated units for homeless individuals or families. There's a growing need, and people in many different types of backgrounds having a need for affordable housing who consider themselves to be homeless. At our midtown development, I know that we had five units designated for people experiencing homelessness, and many people are working individuals, many people have, you know, escaped a domestic violence-type situation where they have chosen to live in their car rather than be in those circumstances, where they come to work every day a little bit early to get ready, and one of our vendors actually brought to our attention that he had an employee who had a need. And so, we feel that this development furthers fulfill the many needs that we face in our community as far as affordable housing. One of the interesting things in this Pew Charitable Trust article that I read was that in market-rate housing, the rising construction costs are often passed on to the tenants. In this particular example, in this housing development, the cost of lumber added $7,300 to the cost of each unit to build it. That translated into $67 a month in rent for the average renter, and being in a rent-controlled type of environment, we simply can't pass that on, and so that just means fewer units can be built, meaning, or more resources being put toward that. And so, those housing needs and those costs are real and are felt by renters in the community, and in this case, puts a real strain on being able to provide a quality and affordable opportunity for people in the community. So, any consideration, you know, that council would give to dedicating resources to this development, I can speak genuinely to the needs that are in the community, as well as real-life experiences in the rental community today of people having affordability issues. We have had stories recently of people who are long-term tenants, who landlords are simply able to get more from somebody else, and people are facing evictions over affordability issues in the community. So, you know, this development would go a long way to providing and meeting those goals of affordable housing, as well as reuse of this site for productive purposes.
Thanks, Matt. We'll have everybody, we can go around the square here and have everybody ask some questions, but could you tell us how will someone be able, this will be an application process, and would people who are already on the waiting list for the midtown housing automatically move to this, or is this geared to, like, different ages, or how would somebody be able to be considered here? And then, I guess, kind of a follow-up, like, what time span are we thinking about where this might come online? So, two things, how do you get to live there, and how long might this take to develop?
The, everyone who applies, applies individually for each of our properties, so there's not an automatic if you're on a waiting list somewhere else. The qualifications here, there would be income, obviously, there's a minimum income as well as a maximum income to qualify for this type of housing, but we're proposing it as general occupancy housing, meaning there are not age restrictions, it's not 55 and above or 65 and above, this would be for anybody who would be income-qualified to live there. All of our housing, we have an application process, and it's, if you're qualified, it's a first-come, first-served basis through the application process.
You know how many, are we looking at months or years to do this, do you think?
To develop, well, our next deadline is an application to the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency for low-income housing tax credits. That application is due in June, and we are expecting announcements to be in the fall. My response to the same question at the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee was probably within a year, we would close on all financing and begin construction, would be our timeline. The housing available for people a year beyond that, it would typically take 12 months to build.
And I guess that sort of gets to, this is a revolving loan that we will be asked to approve tomorrow, correct?
That's correct, and we wouldn't be actually funding that loan, like Matt said, for a few months yet, but it's important that, you know, the local community shows that we're willing to step up and be part of this, and it just is all the more, that can be leveraged further into the project. So, yeah, we're committing the funds, we aren't going to close until, you know, other parts of the capital stack are in line.
Questions from both?
When you go into the building phase, how will you make sure that the workers that you're using, the workforce, is reflective of the community that we represent, that the workforce is diverse in our community?
I'm proud to say that all of our developments have participation by, we refer to it as an acronym of MBE, WBE, but Minority Business Enterprises, Women Business Enterprises, and Veterans. I think we could always do better in that regard. I know there have been conversations in the community about inclusion on different developments and proposed projects. We always do a lot of proactive outreach to those who are on the city's approved list, as well as business enterprises that aren't registered on that official list. We do reach out, reach out to them and document all of our, all of our efforts. I think that that number could always be better. I haven't been invited to participate in the conversations that other groups have been having on how to do that, and so I think that we need to make a better connection, better connection there. I did provide a little bit about the diversity, equity, and inclusion statistics on some of our, who we house, for example, that would be like the third page in, on some of our more known developments, as well as the values and bylaws of the HANDS organization state that 51% of our board composition always has to be women, minorities, and veterans in particular. Our housing seems to be very reflective of the, of the community and equitable on who we do. We also have always had a requirement on our bylaws that we have low-income participants on our Board of Directors. So, residents of our housing, as residents also of the city who live in particular census tracts, or are representatives of community groups that are underrepresented, do serve as at least one-third of our board composition. Fair housing laws, and HANDS has an interesting employee background, too. About 57% of HANDS employees are female or minorities, and again, 80% of our board serve in those categories of minority, female, or veterans as well. And so, long before we talked about, you know, promotion of diversity and equity, the HANDS board has been a pretty diverse organization as well. But I would welcome ideas and opportunities on how, not only, my concern is this, of not only the business enterprises that might be reflective of that, but those who are working on the job in construction trades, I think is a real, a real need in the community. So, even we can target owners and having that ownership participation on, I'd like to talk about ways we can improve the participation of, Fred Rush used to call it minorities, on the job of actual workers.
Right, and that's kind of like, thank you for your explanation, that's kind of what I was thinking of, because, I mean, even in the area you're building in, I mean, like, you'll have kids and people down there that will be looking at people working, it's just great if they could see people, a diverse workforce, working in front of them, I mean, you know?
Can you guys hear me? I had a question.
Jasmine first, we defer.
Okay, I just had a question as far as the income limits, what's your income limit that, what's that line, what's that baseline set for?
I can get more specific information, I always speak in terms of a percent of the area median income. The maximum would be about 60% of the area median income. We would have income targeting at 50% as well as 20% of that area median income, which I believe is around $55,000 or $56,000, so 50% or 60% of that category would be kind of the income limit.
Okay, so you expect people who make over $30,000 to be able to afford to live there, or under $30,000 a year? I'm trying to get rough, you know, pictures here on what the target recipients of this housing are going to be.
I think that the 50% of the area median income was about 25 or 26, and that can include family sizes as well, so it's not just, you know, but I will certainly forward additional specific information for you.
Okay, because, I mean, sustaining a need for something, but people not being able to afford it, isn't really addressing the need. And right now, as the current only renter in the whole city who sits on the council, I don't believe anybody else is paying attention to the rent prices, that landlords are starting to actually charge people, but the cost of living is going up in our area, so I think as an administration, we definitely have to factor that in, that you might not be looking at the median income right now, just because it could be changing. So, I definitely want to put that into perspective for people who are watching, that if you, you have to make a certain amount of money a year to even qualify to live here, is pretty much what I'm getting at. But I do appreciate you answering those questions, and please do give me that information.
Sure, and our income guidelines are set by, you know, federal guidelines, as well as, and we're cognizant of the fact that we're often below what the maximum permitted rents are by the federal government because of those competitive factors. I mean, you might, by federal regulation, be able to charge well into the 900s for a three-bedroom apartment, but we know that that's not attainable, and our rents are well below that, and so we try to use the federal guideline, but, and be sensitive to market conditions as well, but I'll be happy to, what our proposed rents are, I'll be happy to provide.
So, Mike?
Can you hear me?
Oh, do we have Ed?
Ed Brzezinski here.
Okay. Go ahead, Ed.
May I, Madam President, I just have a question.
You have the floor.
We're talking about giving, giving people a hand up, not a handout. Why are we building another project? If there's 24 acres there, how many single-family homes could we put families into there? That's my question. Mayor Schimber is a big transformational guy. I wish I would have been part of any decision-making earlier, because I would have brought it up much earlier. Can you tell, is it not feasible to do single-family here, Matt?
Well, I think that the style of the building is being proposed as a cost factor, I think single families could be. We had proposed perhaps a phase of duplexes or townhouses in the future, but we felt at this point, the design that was being proposed in this phase was the most economically feasible to build.
You know, I worked VSI for 35 years, 25 years, whatever it was, and self-esteem is the main thing. You give folks ownership, not rental, not help, government, or whatever, but real ownership. This is my house, and you'd be surprised what a lift-up that is for them as human beings. That's, that's my, my story, and I'm sticking to it, and I'm done, okay? I didn't mean to throw a sticky wicket in here, but if there's any way in the world that we could put some single-family housing in there, I sure would love to see it. Thank you.
First of all, I would like to echo what Mr. Brzezinski said, that maybe there is some room for mixed use in your plan, you know, this is your preliminary plan, but before that, concern is that this partial land is not currently zoned for residential. So, I guess you would be seeking some type of variance or some type of, from the zoning board and from the city in order to build on this parcel. Let me go with part two. Hammer Mill is historic for being a bad corporate citizen when it comes to the environment, and I just want to know if you have an estimation on what you believe it would take to clean and green this area in order to make it safe for people to live on?
Sure, well, first, the zoning question, this is a waterfront designation, and so everything proposed for use on this site is conditional use, which would require, we'll be back here discussing, and with the Planning Commission, what our specific plans are and recommendations, and I believe multifamily is considered, like all of them, a conditional use for this, and so whether it would be a hotel that was being proposed... And so, whether it would be a hotel that was being proposed or multifamily housing, it's a conditional use. The second, second part of the question, can you repeat that again?
Just that Hammer Mill's historic, it's legendary, I don't know if it's true or not true for what may or may not be in the ground there. And so, whether you have a, a price tag on what's it going to take to clean and green the space in order to have somebody live there.
Thank you. The, there was testing done about 16 years ago on a previous proposed use of this site. And so, we have some preliminary, not preliminary, but they're dated test results. June 2nd, we have a crew coming in to do core samples on the entire site to verify those results from 16 years ago, as well as help us formulate what we feel the remediation levels would be. The significance though of the data from 16 years ago is that it showed it was within a reach to have light remediation on this particular side of the parcel. I want to say that I did see the test results for the balance of the parcel and the uses were much heavier and levels much heavier in this part that's not part of this project would be parcel A where Erie Management Group is. So we felt that some preliminary data was encouraging and we're retesting that to, to ensure the viability of being able to do housing on this. We had some meetings late last year with the Pennsylvania DEP, who oversees the process of what's called an Act Two clearance for land recycling such as this, and felt that the meeting was encouraging. They would like to see something done with this site, and they were encouraged with our plans to be able to, to fulfill that. So we felt that those were encouraging things. Yeah, there, there are some history with injection wells and things that are not located on this particular parcel. And I think that the, even the worst, more severe side was on the other side of East Lake Road, referred to as the Dunn Brickyard, which is not part of this particular parcel. So we felt that it was kind of in a nice middle ground, that it could be with some light remediation turned for residential use. But June 2nd, it's called a Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment. The Phase Two will be, the site work will be done on June 2nd, and we'll have a clearer picture as to what, what levels need to be done there.
Okay. Thank you. East Lake Road?
This is on the north side.
Okay, so it's, they, they'll be actually looking right at the lake, basically?
Correct.
Right.
We'll go to Chuck next, but Chuck, I, I just wanted to interrupt a minute before you. Chuck has worked a lot with homeless populations, so I'm sure he'll have some good questions. But I kind of wanted to go back to when you talked about going to Tracas and you said, you know, you saw this, it was like, oh. And I, I think, we talked at the Giant Eagle Grocery Store parking lot a couple of weeks ago, and it struck me that you seemed like enchanted, isn't the right word, excited about the potential to have those lake views for the, the tenants. I mean, and you said you were looking, you were, so you were looking for something on the east side, or like, is that, am I right that that's what you were looking for? And I wondered, you mentioned conditional use and waterfront, and we're so used to it being our, you know, the our West Bay front, you know? I wondered if there had ever been a conditional use for housing at all on the east side. Does anybody know? I mean, it strikes me that this could be like sort of, well, groundbreaking, like, hey, we're acknowledging that the east side deserves to have access to the water views like anybody else. So maybe that's more of an editorial comment, but you seemed very taken with the notion of being able to not just find something on the lower east side, but something where, hey, everybody should have a chance to have a lake view, but I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, I think it's a terrific site, and as we move through this process, I'd love to meet with council out there or others in the community to take a look at it. It, I, I don't know if enchanted is the right word, but, well, we have, you know, we have a standard in that, that, you know, it used to be, is it a place where I would have one of my relatives live? And I don't think that that's good enough, you know? A standard for any housing that we develop has to be, is this someplace that I would live? Is this someplace that our staff would live as, as members of this organization that provide housing? It can't be just good enough, or it can't just be good enough for somebody else. It has to be, you know, a place that I would choose to live and be part of. And when I looked at that site, I felt that way about it. I thought, seeing this back in a use of some sort, and because we're in the housing, housing arena, this definitely would be a site that would be terrific to live on, regardless of what side of town it's on, or what income bracket that we're in. I just think that it's a very, very desirable site, and I think along with many of the other groups and businesses that are investing in this area, I think that it provides a great opportunity for, for people to have a start in life. And, and I'm sensitive to the councilman's comments about, you know, handouts or hand, hands up. But I really think that once you have your housing settled in life, you can focus on establishing yourself in so many other regards, whether it's education, or your career, or your family, and knowing that you would have a, a place that is in a desirable location like this, I think just all of it, if the word's enchanted, I, it was more of a, a feeling of it coming together, that this could be an excellent place for families or students to be able to, to live, to live at with great views, as well as opportunities that present themselves in this area.
Maybe an aha moment would have been a better description. Aha!
And I've, I've gone to Summit Township and looked at acres, you know, that are on the market for sale, and you can say, okay, this is great. But when you came into this location that is this close to the city with lake views and the opportunities that are along here, I, I'm excited about this site, and I'm excited about the, the possibilities that are here. Sorry, I got carried away.
Well, no, I want to follow up too on, on, you know, the number of 24 acres was thrown out there, and I just want to clarify that, that that's not all buildable acreage. I mean, what's actually buildable is about 12, about half of that. And so what we have noticed with that site is that even though it's at first glance something that you might think would be more suitable for industry, it's actually not quite big enough to get any meaningful industrial investment in there, because it's got that long entranceway all the way to the back, that takes up some of your acreage. And then by the time you get to the back, it just hasn't been the right fit. And nor is it likely the right fit for a large-scale residential, you know, single-family home-type subdivision. It's just not necessarily the right fit for that. But in addition to that, I don't think you would be able to get the types of financial subsidies and support you would need to get this site fully remediated for individuals to put single-family homes back there. I mean, this type of development. So if, if you're thinking that that could be a site where you could have folks build individual, single-family homes back there, I don't think you would necessarily get that type of financial support or subsidy to do that. You have to have this type of project where you can get, you know, possible assistance for remediation, what's left of it. So that's why this, given the size of the parcel, the limitations, the work that still needs to be done there, affordable housing really checked a lot of those boxes when we looked at this. So I just wanted to, to throw that in. It's actually about half in terms of buildable area.
Chuck, before I interrupt you again, so let's let Chuck ask questions, but...
So we're looking at $20 million in investment in this. You said 40, or 50 to 60 units, so we're looking about $500,000, or $400,000 per unit on that, about 1,000 square foot units. Some of them look like 700, up to as much of 11, as 1,100. So we're looking at $400 per square foot in development costs.
That's all development costs. That's, you know, construction financing costs, that would be capitalized reserve accounts. And what I mean by that is we establish supportive services escrows, so we can provide for 15 years of resident resources. We call them the Resident Resource Coordinator, so support that residents might need. All of those get capitalized. Developer fees, construction costs, yes, that's, the bulk of that being construction costs.
That, the residential support coordinator, I, it's like, like a social service kind of setup, or is that more like maintenance side of things?
No, we, we call it supportive services escrow. So we escrow enough funds to make sure that we can provide service coordination to residents. We connect people with rental assistance if needed, job training assistance if a need, if needed. Unfortunately, sometimes a crisis service, you know, is needed with a family, and so all of that is paid for by money capitalized at the front end of a project.
Now, you'd point out the work done with the homeless. I've actually never rehoused anyone into HANDS house. You know, the income guidelines, the felony, part of the applications, you know, some of the work there's. You know, there's, there's a particular vein of, of our community that you're serving. So I've never, that ends up being outside of mine typically. Historically, you guys have had a 50% pilot, at least that's what I have on the budget from, what, 2020, I guess, is the one I'm looking at. Do you have any idea what kind of assessed value you're talking about on this, and if it would be pilot-eligible, or, you know, what, what the revenue towards the city would be?
Yeah. I don't feel that, I know it to be a fact, we don't have a pilot arrangement on any of our properties in the city of Erie. We've been paying, since about 2020, we had an agreement, a temporary pilot agreement to be able to get us to paying 100% assessed value on all of our properties within the city of Erie. So this would fall outside of that, but it would fall within LERTA, I mean, the LERTA that would exist. But beyond that, we're paying 100% assessed value on all of our properties in the city of Erie. The last, the last pilot agreement that expired was St. Joseph Apartments on West Sixth Street.
All right. Sorry, I was looking at the council book that they gave us in December, so it had you guys with three parcels, assessed at seven and a half, and paying $49,000 in pilot. So I just wasn't familiar with the, the latest update on that.
I think Ed Betsa explained that to us, Ed, remember?
Yes.
Sort of?
Yes.
It's all coming back now, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
But I don't have a speculation on what the final assessed value would be on, on the property. I don't.
Okay.
I don't know.
And I know it's probably still, before you get the, the test results back, but I'm still looking for what estimated figure would be for the remediation part of the, for the parcel?
Well, the test results will determine further remediation that might, that could be needed. At this point in time, putting it in the category of remediation, you might notice a lot of, on this aerial view, a lot of concrete slabs that are there from the buildings that were existing. That's what all those kind of tan gray areas are there. Those have to be removed, and I know that is part of our site work cost. The smoke stacks, I will put the smoke stacks and the cement slabs, I'm reading here on our proposed budget, at about $3.3 million. One of the three existing stacks is a topple risk. It's been evaluated by International Chimney Company, who has had a longstanding history with doing work on those stacks. I've done a thorough evaluation. They're concerned about the condition of one of them, and so they have to be dealt with. I would put that in the category of remediation, as well as the removal of the existing slabs. So those are known costs.
So, $20 million project, you're talking about $3 million coming from the revolving loan fund from ARP. How essential is the $3 million if it's 15% of your funding?
I think that the most significant part of it is having local commitment when we go out to leverage additional funds from other sources. Showing that as a financial commitment and buy-in from the community has proven to be successful in the past, as well as essential. And so, you know, percent of the, the project is still a sizable amount, that not every development comes in for and shows that local support. And so, I think that that's an important factor as, part of this as well, showing that local buy-in.
Matt, I was hoping maybe you could, I mean, I think you offered, if any council people would like to go and actually see the property, we could do that. But just pretend you're giving us a tour of some of the things that HANDS has done. I know, I mean, as a member of Preservation Erie, you know, I'm always looking at, you've also, you've done adaptive reuse, but you've also been sensitive to the, in, in those two houses you did on the West Bay Front. I remember hearing you present at the Planning Commission, I think, about making sure that, that that fit into the neighborhood. That was new construction. So just kind of give us like a, I don't know, an aerial view. I'm thinking about those Rosewood Apartments on Sixth and East Avenue, which just, just a beautiful building. And I'm thinking about what you've done on 12th Street and, you know, Parade Street. The housing that I think that you were involved with in adaptive reuse up on, you know, 26th and Peach. So, and even if you want to go back and, go all the way back to St. Joseph's Home, which was an adaptive reuse as you, what, 55 years ago? So I guess maybe because of my age, I've, I've grown up with HANDS, knowing what, what you've done, but just pretend you're giving us a view of, we do this really well. I mean, you don't do, I hope, you don't do junky stuff is what I, is my impression from having seen it in different parts of town, in different types of settings, in, in different ways that you've approached housing. So maybe you could tell us a little bit about that, because, oh, and the Boston store too. I mean, you have a whole portfolio of, do, being really good at doing housing, I guess is what I would say.
Yeah. I think that HANDS owns and develop, has developed some of the most unique buildings in the, in the city of Erie. I mean, the conversion of the orphanage, St. Joseph's Home in 1979, Villa Maria at Eighth and Liberty, Ninth and Plum area. You know, we've, we own former nursing homes, the Golden Living Center at 26th and Peach, has converted into housing for veterans. And so, we do have a number of adaptive reuses between schools, orphanages, nursing homes, convents. The Villa Maria College Dorm is not in the city of Erie, but nearby on the old Villa College campus, and so that was converted, converted to housing. But we do have a number of very attractive new construction developments as well. Eighteenth and Hickory area, it's called North Coast Place Apartments, a very attractive brick building in Little Italy. And beyond the city, this style of building, we have called Ridgeberry Apartments. It's on West 26th Street near Wegmans and the Walmart on, in Mill Creek Township. And so, townhouse-style buildings on Old Zook Road. We just, we have a number of properties that we feel that it's important to build to and to, to complement or enhance the neighborhood.
Would anybody like to make arrangements? Would anybody like to make arrangements tonight to go visit the site? Or are you later, would like to do that later? Or what else can Chris or Matt answer tonight? Jasmine or Ed? Mayor Schember, did you have anything to ask or contribute?
Just say it's been a great conversation. I've learned a lot and I appreciate all the questions and the good answers that we're getting back. Thank you.
Jasmine, you look like you're thinking.
No, I appreciate everything that I heard. I, there's a need for housing. So whether it's, you know, affordable housing or housing that the city is going to be helping build, it's needed. I do also know there's a need for homeownership in the city as well. But that's a conversation for another day. But I would love to have more information on the income limits and things of that nature. Because as Councilman Chuck Nelson had said, there is a population that doesn't even meet that criteria because they're already Xed off the list. So there is still community that needs additional assistance. But I would just like to know the income. That way I'm able to let my community know of all the information. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually thought of a question that somebody in the community had asked me. And I don't know if Chris or Max, I don't think that you were involved with this, but maybe Chris was. Somebody asked me about that. Now I'm going back to the west side, that chunk of land on West Second Street. Remember there was going to be a mixed-use development there? I think it was somebody from Ohio. And the top floors were going to be like market rate. And do you know anything about that parcel there? Somebody asked me whether there were any housing development plans for that.
We, Hand does not have any for that site. Yeah, I don't know what the status is.
Yes, there was, yeah. And, you know, I think it was.
I remember.
Yeah. But that wasn't anything that we were, okay. Is there anything else coming down the pipe though, from Hand's also in terms of other types of projects that you have in the hopper that might be?
For the city, I think that this parcel could be developed in multiple phases. Hearing feedback tonight on the different types of housing, we could certainly take that into consideration and look at it. We have some outside of the city of Erie that we're working on. We currently are going to renovate an existing school that we converted by the name of Chestnut Street in Fairview. So we have affordable housing opportunities in Fairview that we're working on as well. But.
And I just wondered to kind of circle back to Mo's question. And you did also, I mean, you talked about job training. How do we keep that conversation going to make sure we have the connections in terms of, you know, apprenticeships, mentorships, you know, construction-type jobs? I know Mel Witherspoon, who could not be here tonight, has been talking to somebody. We learned about another individual who's in Allentown, who's a native of Erie, who would like to start doing some apprenticeships here. So I think part of it is about the communication because there's always so much going on. So if there's anything we can do, Matt or the administration can do, council members can do to keep that conversation going so we don't lose sight of it. And we make it a priority. I think it would be really helpful. And different people have different contacts in the community. Sometimes we don't always know what everybody else is doing. But if there's a way to even, you know, invite a couple of people from council to, I don't know, come to your board meetings or something? I mean, let's figure out how to build those relationships.
Me and Mr. Troup will work on something with you. We'll sit down one day and see if we can at least brainstorm some ideas because it's important. And inclusion is one of the hallmarks of what I stand for. And so, you know, because recently, you know, we had an entity say, you know, hey, we're going to make sure 10% of these jobs in a 90% black neighborhood go to black people. And I was like, where the hell? You know, you wouldn't go to Mill Creek and say, hey, we're bringing in 90% black people and, you know, in work in your space.
Yeah.
And so we have to be mindful of sensitivity and true inclusion. And I know that there's been a lack of training and a lack of a pipeline for workers. And it's not going to be fixed overnight. But I think that that's paramount on how we build from a council perspective, a healthy town.
Yeah. And I know Mr. Williams in the Treasurer's Office, when he was on this Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee, was concerned about it as well. So perhaps we can follow up and include him in those discussions as well.
Jasmine, I saw you raising your finger.
I had a meeting, yeah. I'm unmuting, but it feels like I'm like overseeing, like I'm a spy and I just don't want to be rude and interrupt anybody when they're speaking mid-sentence. So I just have to interject myself. But I did have a meeting with Donnie, Donald Crenshaw. And I was very moved with the work that he is doing with his apprenticeship program just because he has very great documentation over the before and afters of what his young men were, men and women were able to do. And they are mostly all minority, every single picture. There wasn't really any, you know, lack of minority representation. It was actually one to three or four white number spectrum in those pictures. So for me, I think that just making sure we're communicating with people who are already doing the work is key because if we could make sure that his young men are able to use the opportunities that are going to be coming to our community, that would be great because they live in the community, they work in the community, and their families are going to be raised in the community. So making sure they have work is definitely a priority because I'm tired of hearing that our people aren't trained. When I was able to see physical videos and pictures of his crews, of people in the community who look like me and you. So I definitely want to put that out there that I know for a fact this crew is a minority. And I don't know if there's any other crews out there who are union as well. But make sure you guys are networking with everybody who's in our community doing the work. He has over 20 years of apprenticeship experience that he was able to show me a record of. So that's pretty interesting. Thank you.
Okay, one more time, anybody else have anything to add?
Yeah. So the, there's always the concern of being the first people to move on something that's an investment. So how does that work on your side of things when, you know, the city comes up and is the first move on it, you know, providing $3 million of a $20 million project? You know, and we're voting on tomorrow a waterfront conditional thing where the scope and plans changed because of finances and market issues. So how do we ensure that we're not the only people in on this? Is there stipulations on these kinds of agreements?
Sure. So it's actually pretty common on most of the projects I work on where there are conditional commitment letters. So it's conditioned on all of the other funders approving in the end. It's conditioned on all of the zoning requirements, all of the remediation requirements having been met. But importantly, what that shows is that, okay, if all of these conditions are met, we're on board. We're going to support this. But we're certainly not going to be able to fund anything until PHFA is able to come through with it and all of the other aspects are approved, and then we have a joint closing. So it's a conditional commitment, but it's still an important commitment. And then those of us that follow in the capital stack will see that, okay, the city's on board. But yeah, the funds are not deployed until conditions are met.
And this is me only having four months' experience at my job. When does city council, like, when does it, out of our scope and out of our voting ability on something like that? Like, do we, you know, we're making votes tomorrow on this. Is this something where once we vote tomorrow, then it's all up to you to hold that accountable? Or do we still have any leverage to hold this project accountable?
So the funds are held until zoning questions are answered, until remediation is passed by DEP. And you'll know when the funds are actually going to be cut because you get a monthly report showing where the projects are pending and what has actually been funded. So, but, I mean, we can always, you can always reach out to me. I can give you updates as we go along as to where the project is. So, but I don't, anybody who has worked with me for any amount of time knows that, and not every project that you approve ultimately closes. Most of them do. But there's been some that I've held back and never funded because, for various reasons. And this is going to be no different. There's going to be conditions that have to be met. Our city solicitor's office will be involved. And only when those conditions are met will it be funded. So this is really nothing new. It's been this way, you just haven't seen it.
Oh, it's all new for me.
Yeah. No, I get it, I get it. And there's projects that, again, you know, 98% of them, whatever it is that you approve, ultimately get funded. But occasionally, there is a deal that never is funded because something happened along the way, and I did not disperse those funds.
Just say that again, you did not disperse the funds. So it's not like there's a loan that's approved and it goes out the door before everything's met.
Right.
Okay.
Funds don't get dispersed until conditions are met.
And I would say ongoing, I mean, there are covenants that will run with the land in this project forever. So it's not like a developer can get the funds and not live up to affordability requirements or renting to who you say you're going to rent to or to include people who are going to be included in it. I know that there are monitors from the city who come over every year. And they sit in front of stacks of our tenant files to make sure that we are in compliance with all of the requirements that go, to go along with it. And so it's not only getting to the point of all the requirements, but it's an ongoing relationship where monitoring is always a part of the equation as well.
That brings up another question for me. So what phases are we agreeing to right now? So, I mean, I know this comes in multiple phases. Are we agreeing to phase one? Are we, like, are you able to change and change the scope of it? You know, are you going to be able to change the parcel maybe and change what's on that waterfront in the future? If this is unfunded, will you be able to, like, define that parcel and let a couple houses go on the waterfront? You know, like, is, where will changes be able to happen if funding changes?
I don't.
I mean, I would say some of this is still going to be determined by the test results that you get. You know, the layout specifically of how the property is going to be is still, I mean, it's largely understood, but it could change. I mean, anytime you have a project like this, you know, it's going to evolve. I mean, there's no way that you can really know upfront specifically. In fact, it's rare when you, your first design and your first estimate is where you end up at. It evolves.
So the concern being any public dollars that would get the site prepared for use as housing, that we would sell it for a couple of luxury homes or something? I mean, it's not part of our mission, and so I don't, that intent is not there to.
That, no, that's not, that's not my particular concern. That would be a good example, but like, my particular concern would be like, you have a phase one and a phase two to this. The phase one is up on East Lake Road. So let's say that we put $3 million forward, that you don't get the rest of the funding. You build the two buildings, I think was phase one? Is that?
One.
Look at the one building? One, sorry, one building. And then at the end of that, you say, okay, we couldn't really do this, but we laid the groundwork. So now we are going to, you know, divide off this waterfront property and we'll sell it. It wouldn't be you building it or developing it. You would sell it and you'd try to get funding to maybe drop in a couple more of these. And maybe another developer comes in, puts some really nice houses on that waterfront because that's a pretty prime piece of land. You know, like, that's, so I'm just trying to figure out what can change coming down the pipeline, depending on how the other $17 million comes in. I just want to understand, like, what is capable of changing so that, so that when this money, so that when we approve this, that we're not back here in 10 years and Mo and I are trying to recall off of memory, you know, what happened?
I think I know Chuck. I think I know Chuck's trying to.
We'll get that notebook and continue.
What's, I think, just to make it plain, it's like, he's trying to say, what safeguards does the city has that we put money into the affordable housing project and it doesn't go to full scale? And then we're putting mansions up on the lakefront at, you know, at premium prices and for select clientele.
Is that a possible?
Well, I mean, this, but this goes back to, I mean, I know where our dollars are going to go in.
Okay.
Just like every deal I do, I know where my, I know where our money is going.
Oh, no, I understand that part of it. Ours doesn't, is not enough money to build the houses on the lakefront. Or, you know, the condominiums on the lakefront.
Right.
So if we fund just the entryway and then the rest of it doesn't get funded, did we just build a road so that we could put in not affordable housing?
No, no, because like I said, I'm going to have a conditional commitment letter, which is going to be conditioned on approval of every other piece of the capital stack.
So as we're funding it, we are funding it, understanding that the second phase is going to happen? That's.
No, if, and this is the same with any deal I have. If somebody comes to me and says, you know what, we couldn't secure this piece. Okay, now the project is redesigned. I still haven't cut a check.
Okay.
Come back to me and tell me, if you can't secure 20 million and you're only able to secure 15 million, okay, show me this now. Show me the new version of this. The city still hasn't cut a check.
Okay.
When I issue a commitment, it's a conditional commitment when there's multiple parts of the capital stack.
Okay, so that's, so, because this is in phases. So I just want to make sure that our conditions don't stop at the first phase.
Right. Well, I mean, what we are looking at, and it's our best estimate today, because these projects do evolve, is that we are thinking somewhere in the $20 million neighborhood, we'll do the whole project. Is that correct? I mean, that's ultimately where we think we're going to end up. So assuming that we support this, our commitment to you is going to be that the other remaining portions of that 20 million get filled out before we fund it, which is a very standard practice in making a commitment like this. So hopefully that.
Yeah, so we're committed through the end. We're not just committing for the first phase so that he can go out and get the rest of it done.
No, because, and, you know, usually funds are put into an escrow account where there's construction draws put in. And that's once everybody funds that.
Okay.
So this is actually very typical of most of the deals I work on that are, you know, unless it's a smaller amount, there's multiple funders. Either everyone approves or everybody walks away.
Okay.
And that's what's happened in the past on occasion. Typically doesn't happen, but on occasion, something doesn't go right, we never cut a check.
The people who live in these houses, like, if their, things go wrong in their houses, is that like, you know, if you live in like government housing, for example, they come fix your toilet? Then whose responsibility is that in these homes?
Hand would be the ongoing property management agent. So the property manager, we have full-time maintenance that, there's a work order line. There's, you know, people can report it and have it taken care of.
Everybody's good now? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.